The Chicago Common Council Meeting will now come to order on Wednesday, November twelfth, two thousand thirty-five. Please stand for the political leaders.
Political leaders of the United States and America. We would like to express our thanks to the citizens of Chicago.
Medina Roopaw. First District Councilwoman Bonnie Cook Gonzalez.
Here.
There's District Councilwoman Terrence Hill.
Here.
Fourth District Councilwoman Stacy Winfield.
Present.
Fifth District Councilwoman Robert Garcia.
Present.
Sixth District Councilwoman Yolba Orange. Councilman in large Wayne Ransford.
Present.
Councilwoman in large Vanessa Hernandez Orange.
Present.
Councilman in large Kenneth Monroe.
Here.
That's President Lenny Francis.
Present.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes for the regular meeting on Wednesday, October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five? But it will say. Motion was made by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Councilman Garcia. Do you have any questions on the motion? Roopaw please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wayne Field.
Benny.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
I have a motion to accept the minutes for the special meeting on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. So, both presidents.
Standing.
Motion was made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilwoman Orange. Do you have any questions on the motion? For Medina Roopaw. Gonzalez.
Of saying.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Benny.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any communication from the mayor? The only communication we had was Attorney Ollinger already stating that we did not need a public hearing for federal grants. Thank you. Do we have any communication from the department here? We have accounts payable warrants. One zero two eight two five C C. One 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 two two five C C. And one 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 two two five L A. So, move. Second. Motion was made by Councilman Hill, seconded by Councilman Monroe to accept the accounts payable warrants. Do you have any questions on the motion? For Roopaw please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia, no. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford, yes. Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Payroll warrant by legally one zero two four two five. And one one zero seven two five. So, notice, president. Second. Motion was made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Monroe to accept the payroll warrants. Any questions on the motion? For Medina Roopaw. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Payroll warrant monthly, one zero three one two five. So, move, president. Second. Motion was made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Hill to accept payroll monthly. Do you have any questions on the motion? For Medina Roopaw please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
This time, do we have any committee reports? Councilwoman. Gonzalez.
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that after the last meeting, there was a committee formed to look at what we can do as a council to help and assist people who need information about immigration, ICE. So, myself, Councilwoman Orange, Hernandez, I mean Hernandez Orange, and Councilman Garcia met with some people to let us know what our best options were, and we will be bringing forward some information so everybody could look at it, and everybody could agree what we're bringing forward numbers, information numbers. It was for lawyers, information about rights. So, we just wanted everyone to know that we're in board with this. Councilwoman, Councilman, yeah.
Yeah, just to add, so a couple of things. One is, in the committee, there are only three council members allowed to meet, so that's why we met as a committee. The second thing was is that community advocates were actually invited, so individuals who have been out having information regards to protesting and so forth and so on, we asked them to also join. This is not a hidden meeting. Some of our council members did ask those individuals. We also asked the chief of police to come and give us some information in regards to who's helping, what's helping, and how are we stopping and or advocating for. With that, along with the U B M president, it was decided again, everyone in conversation, we're taking a stance of protection, those individuals, because we have both sides, right? We have sides who are really wanting to advocate and be loud, and then we have other sides that are like, please stop, because it's going to draw more attention to us. So, with that being said, we had decided to blitz the community like we blitz when we're trying to get elected, right? Give them the information. We're asking, our council members all have emails of what the message was. Are you guys okay with it? We would like to spend the funds, the marketing funds that we have to be able to give to the community so we can pay for it along with U B M, so we can give them information, so we go to their doors, so we get something that shows that what we are with and or against. As well as, it was a lot of information that was given to us from the police officers that, or the chief of police that it's not private to everyone, but we know that the city is protecting a lot of our individuals in our community, so with that being said, it's not on deaf ears. We're trying to find a way to help. It might not be what people want, but we're trying to find something we can do because we want to reach the masses that are staying indoors.
Councilmember, yes, just to touch on that. I would rather have did the resolution to back up the residents. I just didn't have the votes to give them. I apologize for it, but I rather had done the resolution and then also do the other thing that I don't think my committee has been doing, these bags with the red cards, the whistles, and all that information. Give the information from H C L U also for lawyers and stuff like that, but that's not everything on.
Any other committee reports? Moving on, do we have any board reports?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm with President Council, and all the councilmen and councilwomen. I'm here today as a representative of the redevelopment board, your representative, one of them. At this time, I have to give a kudos to our mayor, Copeland, and Frank Zaido, because they've been very extremely physical responsible, watching our taxpayer dollars, making sure that money is spent right, making sure that every district get a portion, equal share of what need to go out. To give you an example, all of the cities doing a emergency rehab, and he's doing lab rebate, he's doing A D A wheelchair routes, and recently in Prairie Crossing, they had two individuals that had a year to start working on their particular house. We even extended them a couple of months, so they came back and signed that they couldn't do it, so at this particular time, Frank, Vera, and Board decide to put it out there for anybody to purchase that lot and start building that particular.
Thank you. I started at the beginning when I said Frank, as I was doing Frank.
Frank Vera. I see him.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. They look like people, right?
Do we have any orders on first reading? We have two ordinance, first reading. First ordinance, one five dash zero zero one, Dr. Mayor Anthony Copeland. Ordinance creating and establishing two suppliers business park area fund number forty-four fifty-three. Motion was made by Councilwoman Orange, seconded by Councilman Ransford, your ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero two one on first reading. Do you have any questions on motion? Councilmember, see, Frank.
Yes, Mr. President. Good evening. Frank, brother, the second director of Department of redevelopment. Good evening, council members, our city clerk, and the councilors of attorney. I'm requesting only if we can defer this particular ordinance to a committee of your choice, so that way we can have Mr. Carl Sender who comes to present.
Just passing on first reading of the Department of redevelopment.
Can you do a long call, please? You hear now, first reading Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Next ordinance, our first reading ordinance, twenty-five dash zero zero two-two, sponsored by Mayor Anthony Copeland. The creation's order of state grant fund twenty-four zero-two. Sign monetization at all city-owned arterial brand. Second. Motion was made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Monroe. Your ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero two-two on first reading. Any questions on the motion? Councilmember, see, yeah, see the ceiling at the end.
So, we have some opportunity for the sign placement from federal funding, so we just decided to take this kind of opportunity because it's nineteen ten, so ninety will be federal money, and ten will be from the city, so we just decided to take some these opportunities for there's all the sign of a safety sign on the city.
These are just signs entering the city or a safe sign, what type of signs?
Okay, so the stop sign, terror, the yellow, so it's all of the same assignment on the city.
And throughout the whole city?
Yes.
How much is the grant?
So, we have a B E proportionality in there with fifty thousand dollars, which is forty-five federal money on five thousand for the city, and we have like half millions from construction. So, it'll be nineteen ten as well.
Um, we need to have a public hearing on this and speak as to funds.
So, we are on the state number one, which is only proportionally generic, which is fifty thousand, so forty-five hundred, forty-five thousand from federal money and one five thousand from the city.
Councilwoman Hernandez Orange.
In regards to the sign, so is this something that you have to get, have up and out by a certain time, so it's a grant funded? So, when you put in the information, did you end up saying that by this date, all this would be out and up? Or let's say, we're going to purchase so many stop signs and yield signs, and then once we end up seeing that they, there are other ones to be replaced, we can just replace them?
So, we, we have a place which is like in a bad shape around the city. So, the B E is just, we are going to figure it out where we have to place it, where the like bad sign have to place.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. Did you already put where those bad signs are, and then you're saying you're replacing it? Or is it that you end up just getting a bunch of signs, and they tell you, you have to have a date about when this is supposed to be done?
Yeah, the first stage is we have to figure it out which sign we need to place, which is the B E right now, so which is forty-five thousand dollars. Federal fund and only five thousand dollar for the same.
Councilwoman Orange.
Uh, when you get finished with those signs, can you give us a listing of where you put those signs?
Yes, of course.
You see. Councilwoman Winfield.
Right. There's a lot of faded signs throughout the city, but you can replace it all at home?
So, we are going to replace and like the fund is ending with half million.
Excuse me?
Half of millions dollars for the retro installation. So, this is the amount that we have to fund. But after this, we have to apply again to have another one.
If there is something that, there is something that they're done perhaps on, uh, signs that are broken, I hope you have to go to the city and play there and pay it.
So, because that we have the B E right now, so we're figuring it out where and just definitely the council. Where to sign. Not be there.
Councilman Hill.
Yes, so that in my district, if I see some sign that can be replaced, can I give you the location?
Yes. For Medina Roopaw, please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe. Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any words on second reading? We have two ordinances on second reading. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one five, sponsored by Mayor Anthony Copeland. Ordinance connecting both amendments to the system of user fees for the operation and maintenance of the city's storm water system. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes, I'd like to basically, I guess, postpone or enable the two ordinances on second reading, twenty-five zero zero one five and twenty-five zero zero one six. Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilwoman Hernandez Orange. The table ordinance twenty-five dash, excuse me, zero zero one five and twenty-five dash zero zero one six. Roopaw, please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any more on third reading? We have two ordinances on third reading. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one nine, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. An ordinance amending ordinance number twelve dash zero zero one three, establishing fee schedule for furnishing duplicate reports and documents. So. Motion was made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilman Garcia, zero ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero one nine on third reading. Do you have any questions on the motion? Roopaw, Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yeah.
Garcia, yes. Orange. Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Next ordinance on third reading, ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero two zero. Sponsored by Mayor Anthony Copeland. Creations ordinance, federal grant fund twenty-four zero one. So, move. Second. Motion was made by Councilman Monroe, seconded by Councilman Hill. Figure ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero two zero on first reading. Do you have any questions on the motion? For Medina Roopaw, please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Do we have any resolutions? We have a plethora.
Yes.
We have four resolutions. The first resolution, twenty-five dash zero zero one two. Founder Kenny Monroe, Stacy Winfield, Wayne Ransford, Terrence Hill, and co-sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. Resolution on honorary street designation by honorarily naming Lombard Street to Dr. Edward Williams Street. Motion was made by Councilwoman Orange, seconded by Councilman Ransford, to hear resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one four. Have any questions on the motion? And Paul, Madar Su.
First, can you add my name to that?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, that was the resolution one twenty-five dash zero zero one two. Correct. Councilwoman Winfield.
And Burke Medina, this is sponsored by myself. I'm his sponsor of this resolution. Can you please read the resolution so that I can hear it? Thank you.
A resolution on honorary street designation by honorarily naming Lombard Street to Dr. Edward Williams. Whereas common council passed resolution number twenty-four dash zero 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 two as amended by outlining the policies and procedure for honorary street designation in section eight of resolution twenty-four dash zero zero two as amended. Whereas pursuant to section eight, resolution number twenty-four dash zero 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 two as amended, the common council may recognize and honor individuals or groups without changing the official name of the street or the official address of residents and businesses on the street. And whereas request for honorary street designation must be accompanied by written rational and name of significance of the proposed name to the criteria in section five of resolution number twenty-four dash zero 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 two as amended. Whereas Dr. William, Edward Williams balanced his aggravated motivational and leadership qualities which led Lake Shore to successfully train and secure employment for thousands of unemployed residents in Lake County. His positive influence on others mirrors his personal philosophy. Williams officially retired from his position as Director of Community and Governmental Affairs with the mayor's start in Chicago in January of two thousand eight. However, he continues to be influential in shaping the future of Northwest Indiana through his current business ownership and leadership position. In addition, Mr. Williams received the Sackamore of Wabash, which is the highest service award bestowed by the governor of the state of Indiana. We therefore, being hereby resolved by the common council in Chicago, we now order that the city engineers hereby authorize and direct it to honorary rule designate Lombard Street as Dr. Edward Williams Street by placing a suitable sign naming honorary beneath the official street name.
As growing up, elders, my grandmother always said, give me my flowers while I'm living. And the family come to me about this street name, and I discussed it with my colleagues, and Mr. Wi- Dr. Williams has been around for years, and like everything that Burke Medina read, him receiving the Sackamore Award, that's the highest service award by the governor. It's awesome. I don't know if you all don't know anything about him. As those that you know, because they're used to Googling people. Google Dr. Edward Williams. He is someone you should know. He's a mighty speaker, and he believes in the city of Chicago and helping you all over Northwest Indiana. Thank you all.
Councilman Hill. As a matter of fact, I am one of those friends of Mr. Williams with the work of the government, supporting the agency. He started my career, and he had confidence in me and the job candidates, and he read well with it, so it's delightful to have him renamed after Mr. Williams, because he was very, very distinct. Matter of fact, when I graduated from came to college, he didn't know I was in college. When I walked down to get my diploma, my degree, he looked over there and saw me in a line, never knew I was in college. And he thought, well, this is proud of me after he was told. So, very deserving young man, renamed after Mr. Williams. I'm on here.
Roopaw, please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Will.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia, yes. Orange. Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Next resolution, twenty-five dash zero zero one three, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. Resolution, common council of the city of Chicago to permit the acceptance of grant funding by the Chicago Engineering Department. Motion was made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilwoman Orange, to your resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one three. Have any questions on the motion? For Medina Roopaw, please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Ransford.
Yes.
Hernandez Orange.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
That resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one four, sponsor Mayor Anthony Copeland. Resolution of the common council of the city of Chicago concerning the petition for special use variance to allow for a truck parking facility on a property commonly known as thirteen hundred West one forty-fifth Street. So. Second. Motion was made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilman Monroe. Your ordinance, or I'm sorry, resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one four. Do you have any questions on the motion? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I just wanted to say that my name was also supposed to be on the sponsor. This property that is concerning is, if you guys remember the one hundred forty-fifth, we have that new building on this pathway occupied. There's a lot right there that they want to make a semi-trailer truck parking area, and I'm very against it because we have enough semi-truck.
And I'm very against it because we have enough semi-truck traffic through our neighborhood in in East Chicago or our first district. And between FedEx and other areas that aren't supposed to have that traffic, they keep, you know, going down that that road and the cars are constantly getting side swiped. And it's just, it's just a nuisance. So this resolution, if you look on the very last paragraph, it is a resolution to deny this. So looking for, yes, you're denying this, this company from being in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. President, as a point of information, my office apologizes. Yes, Councilwoman Gonzalez is the sponsor of this resolution. Thank you. Royal Office? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Ransford?
Yes.
Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one five. Resolution sponsored by Councilman Lenny Francis. Resolution, common council of the city of East Chicago concerning a petition for land use variance to allow for two single freestanding family dwellings on a property commonly known as forty-nine seventeen Lake Avenue. So move. Second. Motion was made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Monroe. To your resolution twenty-five dash zero zero one five. Have any questions on the motion? I can speak on this real fast for my colleagues, this is in my district. At forty-nine seventeen way, there, there's two properties there, there's one in the front, one in the back. There was a purchase of it and now what they're just trying to do is separate the two property. Separate properties. It was one time just home by same family, or they sold separately. So now they're just trying to separate the property at all. And your Royal Office? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orange?
Yes.
Ransford?
Yes.
Hernandez Orange?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
That concludes our resolution. Moving on, we have some more business.
And it's one of the things in that last week, I brought up my resolution of immigration. Councilwoman Orange, Vanessa Orange, you know, accused me of being political because I brought up that resolution. That's furthest from the truth. I'm here kind of standing for the residents. And what she said, the kind of community statement, I got a right to defend that statement.
I'm gonna rename, but not any name, call them back.
I'm not, I didn't name a father.
I'm not gonna do that.
I didn't name fathers.
It was not political. She made it. That's all, Mr. President. Councilman Helfman?
Yes, Marina, can I give you a question about Martin Luther King Center, please? Give us a update, because I've been talking to you and talking to you and residents in that third district. How are you upset with me? I'm doing what I can, and they're how are you upset with the mayor? And superintendent of parks, there's nothing going on in Martin Luther King Center. Yet you all went to Markstown. You got busy with that one, and we hope that it's nice and well. We want the same thing done in Martin Luther King Center. And we have much more, many more residents in the third district than they have out there. And they want answers. If we don't get no answers, they're gonna show it at the podium. Thanks.
Yeah, I have to make it clear, you have asked me those questions personally and I've answered those questions too. I can state them for the record. What I stated to you at the time was that we are looking at Besty Owens. Since Besty Owens is completely closed and it will be sold, that's the plan. The system that they have right now for cooling and heating will be removed from that building to replace Martin Luther King's infrastructure, because it's the same, literally the same infrastructure that all these centers were using. And then I have spoken to Frank Rivera, who's here in the audience, regarding funding for those improvements for Martin Luther King rehab. Taking a look at the site itself, it comprehensively needs to get fixed. What we did also look at is the structural integrity of the property to make sure that we're not putting in money where if, if you know, building is structurally not sound, there's no sense of, you know, putting money into the building. It was discovered that everything is fine. There were some cracks that are not structural issues. Therefore, we could proceed with rehabbing the property. And as I mentioned to you also, it is going to require an extensive renovation, including moving tile, flooring, heating and cooling, all those items that take time and it takes, you know, securing funding for it. So my goal is to get that by next year. Depending on the federal, you know, whatever grants, fundings that we, that we can put together and solidify to get those contractors in. And so that's what I have to report.
You're correct, you haven't been telling me anything, but still, there's some action. Frank, would you like to elaborate on this too?
Yeah, I can.
Please.
Mr. Marino is absolutely correct, there is some funding, that's available COVID dollars. And I'm intending to go in there and do a full inspection, because there are certain dollars I could expend on that building. Like for instance, a heating system, cooling system, or an air system, the roof, perhaps some leaks and pieces of that nature, bathrooms, to put in things that allow us to have the separation of the situation where people are washing their hands, whatever, under the COVID crack. With it being closed right now, they're closed. We can't, we can't really situate any money yet, but there is money there. I've heard talk of that, a lot of people, fires have been closed. Because I certainly remember they were shut down.
Yeah, you know, and this is great administration. But in my second term, nothing was happening. We had a person who faced it, with Martin Luther King sign, yeah, nobody was going to put a sign up there. And I asked Marina, if we sign out there to let the residents know that it's in the works for renovation, it will be coming soon. I would like that to be put up so they can stop asking me, because I'm not doing what I'm supposed to, which I am. And so they all know that something's going to be coming soon for our Martin Luther King Center. It's a shame that it's been six years, like I grew up in that center, I was there when he built that center. And I'd like to see it come, I would like to see it reopened. So do what you have to do and let's try to get the center open. Going to less, because if not, somebody gonna be upset. Are you ready?
Okay, thank you. Marina, did you let the public know about the veterans ceremony tomorrow? Yes, absolutely. Tomorrow, we are meeting to commemorate all the veterans and what they have done for City of Chicago, for the nation in general. And we are also going to be sho- showcasing the Amiga de la Garza Junior Monument, Veteran Bowl Memorial. So we welcome you to be there at ten AM prompt at the Veterans Pavilion. Oh, sorry, eleven, still show up at ten o'clock. You know, before some other time, that kind of time. But we're gonna have a great celebration, not only celebrating veterans that have shed their blood, tears and all that, but also commemorate East Chicago's, one of East Chicago's finest. And the monument is beautiful, if you have not seen it already. It took many years in the works, but it's finally, for the most part, completed. And so we invite you to be there properly and to enjoy that momentous occasion.
Thank you. And like I say, thank you, one more word of information there. Just talk to me.
Yeah, Frank, wasn't the Besty Owens sold a couple of few months ago?
No, there, there was a couple of scenarios with that, that we had to kind of retract ourselves. So not we, the people who are buying it feel comfortable, because there were some elements there that dealt with environmental issues. And so they feel comfortable, if we give a letter from either to be able to say everything's clean.
So they'd be able to have it.
No, it's not installed yet.
Thank you. Moving on to new business? Oh, I told you, I was going to.
This is my email request. I just wanted to get a report on the lighting. I did submit an email to Chief of Staff, which submitted to Engineering Department. Thanks to Councilman Hill, I have my direct contact with NIPSCO. The problem was the lighting, they ordered material and they hadn't come in. Material is in. I was especially on them about the Sunnyside community, it is pitch black. When I tell you, it's horrible. And I threatened to take it further if these lights, not only in Sunnyside, but throughout the fourth district. So they have a list throughout the city. But Sunnyside is horrible. And you out, you can ride and see it and shake your head at it. It's horrible. So material is in, they thought it would happen Monday, it would be to the storm, it couldn't happen. So the lighting should be getting installed soon, hopefully month by next week.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, I believe you do have United Way to do a brief presentation?
We're gonna be as brief as possible, trust me. Yes, I love business to take care of. Good evening, everyone, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to allow United Way to give a presentation to our East Chicago community and northwest Indiana. Are we going to be able to access?
It's okay, we can just go ahead. That's all right. It'll be all right.
Okay. I'm, I'm Andy Smith. And I am. I am labor and community liaison with United Way. Having forty-one plus years in the steel industry, I decided to step away and and now with, with United Way. Now, we all know United Way. United Way is a hundred and thirty-year worldwide organization. And we, we collect dollars from corporations and individuals. And we redistribute those dollars to other nonprofit agencies such as Boise Girls Clubs, half of charities.
Eighty-three total nonprofits.
Eighty-three.
But currently.
Great, okay. So Joanna Truth Home is also one that we, rather women's shelters, we we assist with.
Right. Okay, we don't need that. Or to be quick. Oh, there you go.
What we're, what we want to do here this evening, though, is leave information about resources that United Way offers to not only northwest Indiana, not only the East Chicago and Hammond and Gary, but to all of northwest Indiana. We all remember United Way as being housed on Ridge Road in Griffin. And that was the days of Lake County and Porter County United Way. Well, since in the past three years, the United Way office on Ridge Road has closed. We've since now merged with the Alpharezo office, the, the Porter County United Way. But we've also picked up three other counties that we're, we are impact. And that's, so we're not only just Lake and Porter County United Way. We are Jasper, Newton, Stark, and Jasper, Newton and Stark County. So there's five, five counties that United Way are servicing now. One of the, one of the programs that I, I am most proud to be a part of is called Level Up. And the Level Up program is we're working with people that are working, but are working the one paycheck away from a disaster. And, and here, this is, this is just a couple of the qualifications that you have to have. And is, do you work all the time, but still have trouble paying the bills? Have you missed work because your childcare is not reliable? Do you want to move up in your career but need training or education in order to do so? We have, we have what we're calling, we call them navigators, but they're, they're, they're social workers. But they're like navigators, they're like social workers on steroids. These, these, these social workers hand-hold our community people, they qualify for this particular program, and it's eighteen months.
Yeah, so they have to be eighteen years or older, they have to be working and have transportation. And so we want to try to get them into higher paying jobs, and then we help them with any barriers that they face during that time. So say somebody wants to get their CDL license. One of our partners will help pay for that, but these navigators work with them, hold their hands. Say it's a single mom that wants to do something in nursing, you know, we could help with some childcare, after school care. Just try to get them through that program, because we know that you can't just put them into a higher paying job. You gotta help them with some of those barriers along the way as well.
Guys, I'm sorry, this is Kelly Jernigan. She's our regional development executive. Okay.
He's our main guy, he gets it done. He's out in the community, talking about the programs, but this Level Up program, as you know, with family, when the parents struggle, the kids are struggling too. So right now, we have seven hundred and sixty-three kids that are living in these houses of active Level Up people that we are trying to help. And so it's definitely making a huge impact. We have other programs as well, really, we'd like to get you guys involved in our Day of Care Program. So we just brought that back this last year. We ended up, we had it August first, we had over seven hundred people sign up to be volunteers. And we did eighty-three projects between Lake and Porter County. So as you were talking about some of your parks departments, you know, we had rolled that out in ninety days. This next year will be more prepared. So different nonprofits that you guys have here in East Chicago, or even the parks, you can have volunteers come and help with that. We had them shoveling mulch in Porter County, we had them, and where were they emptying that dumpster at? Where is it?
The, the school city, the, the main oh, hundred and forty-four. The administration building, that's not hundred and forty-four.
Yeah, but we had them do it, they were painting, they were humane, Indiana had pets, adopted and stuff. So definitely, we'd like about our partnership to make sure that we can help you with some of your projects here. We'd also like to ask to see if you guys would be willing to consider doing a workplace campaign where we come in and present to the city employees about the programs that United Way has. Then they have the opportunity to donate money through their paychecks.
Now, is that a question for, for you guys, or the mayor?
Question from the mayor, you have a department. It'll wear a public work right here. See him after the reading, but okay.
Yeah, we have cards too, that need to be for all the different programs to anybody.
If you feel like we want the clerk, we'll make sure we get them after your presentation. Great, one other resource I'd like to share is twooneone.org. For those, for those community members that are in need of resources such as childcare, mental assistance, possibly NIPSCO, twooneone.org, punch in your zip code. And, and it, it shows you, it's very, very, very friendly to even people like me that is not computer literate, but it, it's, it's a resource for our community. Such as everything that we, we've been sharing with.
Like you said, with the, United Way, the special thing for us is that we don't have one focus, so we can shift and pivot as the community needs it. So right now, we know that they're getting hard, our nonprofit partners are getting all this funding press. So right now, we're pivoting and focusing a little bit on childcare and after school care, we're closing something that we have done. So we have these resource manager or navigator cards that have to our post. I mean, you gotta raise the hub to all the nonprofits. So a lot of times, I know, you know, people don't know where to turn for help. So you can just call United Way and they can figure it out for you, whether it be mental health, whether it be domestic violence, whether it's utilities, all the different issues. We're one hub that can get you connected to all the different issues if you don't know where to turn. So we will leave these cards here until you have resources. We've been, you know, out talking to the, and we present every day the Hammond PD too, just to know that, so that police and everybody know that they have options of places that they can send people.
Share this information, please, but our brothers and sisters share. Share this information, please, but our, our neighbors, our brothers and sisters, share, share this information because, and then, and then contact United Way. Have us practice what we preach. There's some, there's, we got some, we got things that are, that are in need of resources and we have the resources, we have the dollars to assist. And I'm here to promote East Chicago.
And those volunteers, that is, September eighteenth is the day for twenty twenty-sixth. So we'll be doing it, but we also do it year round as well. So that's just the one day that we try to get everybody together, but we have a gal, Evelyn, that handles all the volunteer opportunities. So if there's something that comes up and you guys need a bunch of volunteers rather than everybody doing that individually, just reach out to us and we'll figure it out and be able to help with that.
Yeah.
Can you continue?
Yes, question.
Can you also say if you have any information that we need to know, like upcoming flyers, you can send it to our email or send it to me and then I can get it to um, the rest of the council also. And to the mayor, and I'll give you the contact number for who you need to talk to in the administration for a presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll do that. We'll make sure you get the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I had about Dr. Way, would be uh, we have a street name down. Perfect. Yeah, I know uh, that's good. It's okay, so I want to see people in the audience and someone to the colleagues. I think that's been yeah. Thank you. Any other new business? Moving on to public expression. You please keep your comments to three minutes, refrain from any abusive language to the audience, council members, and the community. First, we had Mr. Juan Fernandez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm trying to break down the conversation, but we're, of course, if they want to. Uh. Pretty hard broken, and we have no votes. Uh, hopefully, there's a flyer that's going out, had some very hard thank yous to make sure that everyone know that they should be ready to. So rally and for our way out of whole lives. I say, especially when I get information from law enforcement to be in certain areas that could cause a lot of problems. But I'm not here really to talk about that, but even though that means that's breaking my heart that I can't talk about it much right now because I'm dealing with uh, another issue that comes up every year. Fifteen years I've been um, running Thanksgiving food drive and uh, but I, first of all, we're like one in seven kids go to sleep on Great America. That's a statistical fact. Last uh, last week I found out that it's now one in five, especially since it's going up with government funding. And other stuff that wonderful, pretty good, stable genius president had, had been out in our country. So um, reason I'm up here is um, due to inflation and due to calls of everything, everything went up from last year. And uh, over sixteen dollars and fifty cents to pay for one turkey. Now that went up to twenty-six dollars and fifty cents. Well, now you're talking about a bunch of people that are in need, that are struggling. Now we have to figure out how we're gonna come up with funds for that in our organization and um, to feed a family, we first started cost twenty-one dollars. Last year it cost thirty-three, this year it's costing almost sixty. And uh, we're running out of funds. We are having a bunch of more volunteers come out, so we appreciate that, but we are um, running out of dollars right now because we don't have enough to feed uh, families and we've been getting a lot of calls, way more than we ever have about people that are needing help. People are even saying that they'll come volunteer and they'll come on, they're seventy-five years old and older, to come help volunteers, we can help them out as well. So it's struggling for a lot of people and um, I just want to know if you guys can help out. Even if you guys can't donate, just showing up to the event, one of the two days, that'll mean a lot. So a lot of people are from the city that are are helping. The W O R O, to see that they're elected officials that they voted for are out there helping as well. Um, our event is uh, next Thursday, next Saturday, I'm sorry, uh, November twenty-second, from ten to two, you'll have to be there all day. And then on Sunday, it is um, from ten to um, two PM as well. If you guys can get the mayor out, that'd be great too, you know, these are the new activists. Or they have people over there, and uh, official, no, could be official, I'm sorry, and um, everyone's more than welcome, you know, and you know, it'd be great for the community, especially CEO, he's there as well. And that's helpful.
Thank you, thank you. Next, we have uh, Mr. Juan Hernandez.
Good evening, council members, uh, and members of my community. I'm Juan Hernandez, which is thirteen with thirty-five years, speaking in Chicago. Four sixteen one two, uh, here to talk about the resolution that didn't pass, and I know it was unrealistic, but I want to talk about the importance of symbols, that courage. Um. The test of any virtue is courage. And we're living in a time where we can't hide. We can't hide. ICE is everywhere. And symbols mean nothing unless we give them meaning. This beautiful uh, memorial for veterans means nothing unless we give them meaning. Resolutions and laws mean nothing unless we give them meaning. This flag gives such allegiance to means nothing unless we give it meaning. This ordinance, or I'm sorry, not ordinance, resolution may been symbolic. But it's important, it's important to a community. Why? Because we live in a time where we have a president who's a criminal, convicted criminal. A compromised Congress that does not respond to the people but to him. And a Supreme Court that really just responds to his answers. We have a spineless governor. And a lieutenant governor that does not know the Constitution. Under the Constitution, every single person, documented or not, deserves due process. All persons have constitutional rights. That's the law of the land. And right now, we have this fight at a level or level we have, we have local, state, whatever level we have, we have to fight. Hiding and putting up information on doors is great. But I mean, not hiding, I'm sorry, putting information on doors is fine, but hiding and hoping that ICE won't come around is not gonna help us because they have a huge budget. It's a paramilitary force. I'm sure you've seen videos of Little Village in Chicago. I'm pretty sure, be sure you've heard of addictions here in both area that's gonna continue. So I ask you to please consider this resolution. If you worry about getting sued, then just vote to remove it. But I want to see us, you, please, to stand with the community. Even if it's only symbolic. Thank you.
Next, we have this Law Inquiries.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lali, and I'm a lawyer. Born and raised here in Chicago and was employed exclusively in Chicago for sixteen years of this full term, so I recognize my place here in this city. I also was a officer in the teachers' union. My heart goes out to my community and I'm passionate and I just can't subject, I'm so sorry. And I'm here today to discuss my concerns. I do not support ICE's presence in our city or in our properties to prepare their missions. I am driven and I'm passionate about this topic because I come from a family line of undocumented immigrants, my own mother is my friend from South America. And simply put, I believe in humanity. I'm concerned about the lack of support given to residents and businesses here in regards to ICE. I'm concerned that families are living in fear. I'm concerned that the business owners don't know what to do when ICE shows up and their profits will falter because less people are buying and supporting right now. I'm concerned that should our community be hit as hard as the communities in Chicago, would we know what to do? Would we be prepared? Would the residents know their rights? Would a US citizen know how to safely intervene? What would you do? In regards to the situation of ICE agents using city property, this should be addressed with a resolution, a resolution that prohibits the use of city property by agents without prior authorization. ICE's presence is alarming and that only causes fear because of visual and mental anguish. Their presence on grounds here in ECS, and that's all about let's get them out, let's repel because we're better than them. It is about viewing them, prepare, and most importantly, our children who somewhat walk past that PD because there's two schools located a hun- less than a hundred yards from that police department. I completely understand we live in a redneck, square state. I get it, our hands are tied. I know there is fear of a lawsuit or backlash from the state, however, I'm asking you to think outside the box and do something, as we learned today. Doing something shows the residents and businesses you care about their safety and that you have their backs. Overseeing city departments like public safety to ensure you are serving the public's needs effectively is something that the state can't take with you. Putting in place a resolution allows for a sense of security, educating residents, businesses, so forth. This would be a great start. I want to be proactive. Lastly, on my final uh, thoughts here, community-led regional response team has been born. And some of them are behind us. We have organized, we're in regular communication and our members are growing every day. We're saddened, uh, we were saddened to learn that our local leaders weren't doing anything, but now we have learned tonight, some are. Some of the team members here today, this team consists of chairpersons, a boots-on-the-ground team. We will begin trainings for our members to disperse information to residents throughout Hammond, ECM, Gary, and we're gonna grow from there. The purpose of our team is to educate, monitor, respond, and document. We are not a radical group, but we are a strong group and will continue voice our concerns.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, President. Motion was made by Councilman Hill, seconded by Councilman Garcia. Roll call please. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Okay.
Orin. Ranch. Hernandez.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yep.